All right, good morning. Welcome to Commissioner's Court amended session October twenty first. We have a full quorum present. Here you may certify the meeting was probably posted. Go please stand for prayer and pledges.
Father Paul Brittany this morning, distinct U N Commissioner's Court, we ask Lord for the wisdom that the Commissioners and Judge will make decisions for the residents of Walker County. Father, we thank you for their service and all that they do and all the departments that are represented here today. Father, I want to cast out a prayer that Jesus taught us and says in Matthew chapter six and verse nine. That this man pray ye, our Father which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, in earth as it is in heaven. Father, we often times repeat that prayer and not really take it to heart, but Father, I'm going to go to some that would ask for your kingdom to come, Father, that you'll set up your kingdom as you is in heaven. Father, we just pray, Lord, that we'll all take serious your word and apply it to our lives. And thank you for all that you give us and all that you do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the protection flag, I am the legislative citizen of Texas, a state under God and indivisible.
I didn't get any citizens input for agenda items. Consent agenda contains twenty items.
Call four please.
Twenty.
And eighteen? Four, twenty, and eighteen.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda, removing four, eighteen, and twenty.
Prove and signal in favor raise your hand. Motion case number four, approve claims and invoices submitted for payments.
On page twenty of forty-seven, we paid part law term for a tax suit. Thought that was produced. Done all the tax suits for us.
We normally do so many problems.
And then on page thirty of forty-seven, a Weesner bill, I think that's actually the bill funding on that one.
That was a, a deer had a very bad day.
Okay, we did too then, right?
You know, insurance, we paid the thousand and then the insurance covered the rest.
Alright, that's all I've got.
And I have one of those on page four. You see you, uh, counseling too? You have no idea where to use.
I asked that question for Andy's, those counsel fees.
Every time we issue a permit on the waste water system, we're required by statute to send ten dollars.
Okay, so okay, I see prayer remarks.
Based on the number of permits we issued previously.
I got you. See, I knew who to go to, but I was the same.
That's all I did. So I'll make a motion, we accept claims and then we'll.
Uh, all in favor raise your hand. Motion case number eighteen, approved proclamation twenty twenty-five dash zero nine honoring first responders for national first responders day. That'll be my notion.
Second.
Prove and signal in favor raise your hand. Motion case now read it. Proclamation twenty twenty-five dash oh nine honoring first responders, whereas the citizens of Walker County recognize first responders providing valuable service through their assistance to the citizens of the communities during times of needs and crisis. And whereas they respond to emergencies without hesitation when the call of duty arises and tirelessly gives their time and energy in humanitarian efforts, making themselves available every hour of the day, every day of the year. And whereas responders have physical strength, stamina, extensive training, courage, and selfless, selfless concerns for the welfare of others. And whereas first responders are professional and volunteers who dedicate their lives to public service and whose skills often make the difference between life and death. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the duties and service, service that firefighters, rescue squads, members and first responders perform by observing not only today but every day. Now therefore, the Commissioner's Court of Walker County and all residents of the Walker County honor and appreciate our first responders and thank them for their service on this day, twenty-first of October, twenty twenty-four.
Ms. Lynda, y'all are doing something on the gazebo, right?
You'll come tell us about it. Invite everybody.
Um, it will be our fourth annual first responders event. It will be next Monday, the twenty eighth at the gazebo. We got approval for that about a month ago. That'll be at ten A M. And we have invited the sheriff's office, the city, uh, San Houston Police, uh, EMS, all of the volunteer fire departments and Hudson Fire Department. So they will all be there. And the constables and Butch's department, um, will present them a bag of goodies. That's the Republican Party, the Republican women.
We appreciate y'all sponsoring that for them.
Yeah. That's where you go, yeah. I was standing, y'all in front, behind.
Alright. That's okay, won't be the first time.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Wayne, you got it?
I got it.
Alright.
It's like one of these days I'm gonna teach Ronnie to smile.
Hey, you'll get there, you keep on along that way.
So on another note, uh, did you know today started early voting? We had, uh, thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-five registered others as of eight parties, so we had two hundred and sixty-one already.
Already there.
Vote, vote, vote.
Number twenty, approved or ratified documents establishing account with First National Bank and other contracts, agreements with third parties related to services for use with EMS, M C ambulance, billing service company.
Yeah, got asked to pull this by our Ms. Chief week after.
Hi, here. Uh, so I just wanted to have this for discussion. Um, I just want it to be pretty clear that we're not needing any to the contract at all. Um, we're just kind of working through building our SOPs for the billing company, which means it's kind of tailoring their processes to what the department needs. Um, these payer portals here, the county has had access to these since we did in health billing. Um, it was brought up that they might be considered a contract, they're not contracts. Um, this is what these billing company will work through to do things like verify eligibility and benefits for patients that they're billing, uh, buyer authorization, they'll be they will defend it. They have to have these portals to work through so that they can bill our patients. But there's no contract associated with them. So I just want to make sure that we're not holding up any processes moving forward by bringing things back to court unnecessarily is just kind of what I wanted to clarify.
Yeah. I'm, I'm the one that asked to put that on the agenda. There are numerous, uh, signatures that are required to various websites and vendors. Uh, none that appear to have any money associated with them, but this was to avoid having to bring anything back to court. It was to get a blanket approval. And then there are signatures required on setting up the bank accounts. I do not agree with Rachel in that there will be no addendums to the contract. There, there's going to be a standard operating procedure, most of which are operating procedures, but included in that standard operating procedure is the rates and the write-off policy, and they are reviewing both the rates and the write-off policies that they may or may not make recommendations to. But I do think the rates of write-offs need to flow through for.
Yes, those will definitely come back for approval before we send them to the billing company. We don't want to get started and then a couple months down the road have to change the way we're doing something. So those will be coming back probably on the next court. But they're not, it's not a change to the current contract that we have in place at all. That's a change to our internal policies here to company. We just send it to them and they implement it in our SOPs.
Right, the procedures, yes, the rates and write-off.
So separating those from this.
Exactly.
This will be.
And this is, this is setting up the account.
Yeah. All these listed on these first pages or portals that, uh, both Rachel, both EMS and P M S M C will transfer.
Both these accounts have been set up with First National. It is our account?
It is our account, yes. Uh, Amy went through a normal process to do that, and it requires of course her signature and my signature.
On the quick and tight.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Okay, I make the motion to approve it, item twenty.
Second.
Move and signal in favor raise your hand. Motion case, I'm twenty-one, update on freezer room remodel.
Where are we at, Ms. Stacy?
Pictures, um, so you all can see, and you'll remember what it looked like. Um, so the freezer room is complete. One of the things that, um, they did is we did have to widen one of the doors. Get our freezer in, um, because I cracked my helmet when it fell on me getting it out. So we had to open that door up to get it back in. Um, but it turned out really great and it's very well. Um, the next project for us will be uh, to, to the restrooms that you've already showed y'all and talked about before and laundry room. So those are going to happen hopefully before the end of the year, first part of next year. But the one thing that's missing in there, when we did this, we took out the old, um, fire alarm system after y'all voted on that. But no fire alarm has been put back yet. So we just need to know where that stands because I understood, I wasn't in court when that happened. I think my brother had passed away, but that that was voted on, that that was going to happen. So I'm just trying to follow up.
I think that's the agenda item below us a little bit.
Twenty-three. Okay, so you got done with things? We're done with freezer room?
Yep.
Twenty-two, discuss and take action on restroom and laundry room remodels, done?
No action required.
No, it does. They discuss and take action on.
So Stacy, are y'all still gonna put the, are you, you trying to do away with the doors, just like y'all talked about before?
Yes, one door, so the, um.
Have the petitions.
Yes, uh, well, we will still have petitions in the restroom, but what's going to happen, um, is we'll open a door for the men's room on the, on the outside door wall now, and where the door is now will be closed in so that, um, the women are coming in this hallway and the men are coming on the side. So that's not only restructuring, it's just a doorway. The rest of it'll be changing out the flooring, painting, things like that.
Okay.
Is, uh, none of that falls under y'all. We have that covered, so it's just your.
So you have the funding to do it?
We do.
Alright.
Yay, look at us.
We'll say no action on twenty-two. Twenty-three, discuss fire alarm installation.
Yes, that would be Larry again. Larry, you mind giving us another update? Does it was?
We are waiting for the final, uh, new floor, uh, footprint to be established, so we get the correct, uh, correct size sensors and everything in it.
Okay, so basically the room model needs to be done.
We're ready to move forward at that point, but we need to know what that new footprint's gonna be.
Okay, so that's kind of.
Well, we're not, we're not adding any sort of buildings, so that.
No, but you're shutting.
You're changing doorways.
We have to know where that's gonna be, and I definitely need to get with you and decide where you want all of your alarms, but how many? That's deciding factor on the call. So you just know where the door is going to be. Uh, I need to come and get it. And we need to pinpoint where you want all of your sensors, fire alarms.
Just passed.
And just as long as I know where it's gonna be, perfect.
If, if you're gonna do that, you probably need to give the chief methods and see, make sure it's all gonna pass, I would assume, huh?
Yes, definitely.
Y'all all three work together, get that going. Yeah. Yeah, number twenty-four, discuss and take action on USDA US Forest Service Community Wildfire Defense Grants Round Three.
We were contacted by, I don't know. Oh, my president's just ran, so. Mr. Donald Day wanted to bring it to the President's House to court, and I think Mr. Coleman's on Zoom. Hey, Ben.
Anybody, Alan?
He's on.
I'm muted.
Am I mute? Uh, hold on a second. Sorry about that. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good. Um, really, I just wanted to tune in. This, uh, grant is available. Um, the, the actual specifics of the grant haven't been dropped yet by the USDA, but we anticipate that happening. Um, yet this month or, uh, the first part of November. Um, the grant itself, I'd answer any questions y'all might have about it, but essentially it, it funds boots on the ground to implement y'all's wild, uh, wildfire prevention plan. Um, typically it's a, it's a, uh, a five-year grant cycle and allows up to ten million dollars that would fund, uh, personnel, equipment. Um, and then a monitoring program to, uh, uh, kind of over time, monitor where areas have been adjusted, what needs the next set of work to happen. Um, and, and kind of a tool to implement your plan moving forward.
Yeah, not knowing much about it, other than basically what he just said there, I wanted to just get approval from the court to, um, have Butch pursue this grant and come see if we can use it, we'll use it, and if not, we won't. So, um, my motion's gonna be approved, agenda item twenty-four, authorizing the Walker County G O M office to apply for the USDA Forest Service Community Wildfire Defense Grant.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor raise your hand.
And he also told us any equipment is purchased through the grant, the grandson.
I like that too.
We still have to wait on.
Yeah, open data, mine tenders control the fire.
I bet you do. That'd be like six-wheel drive.
So we're twenty-five, discuss and take action on the purchase of two ambulances delivered under an order intent made in fiscal year twenty twenty-four. One to be paid from contingency funds available from the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget and one to be funded from L A T C F revenue sharing fund at the cost of two hundred and ninety-five thousand nine hundred each.
So last year, um, during budget workshops and everything, we were told to get on whatever list we could for ambulances. So I put us on a list with Frazier, a letter of intent for two ambulances. Um, one of them was supposed to be for budget year last year, so that truck it's the one that should be here next summer, but it's now pushed out to October of next year. Um, but there's also a second truck on that letter of intent as well. Um, I put it on there for future planning. If we approve both of these trucks on this letter of intent, it'll give us two brand-new trucks by next year, which will then give us five brand-new trucks to our fleet. Um, out of the eight trucks that the county owns excluding the E S D truck, um, all but to meet the requirements to be replaced either for age or mileage, and most of them fits for both. Um, our mileage is really high, our trucks are really old. Um, so I'd like to get to the point where we have brand-new trucks and then next year start talking about remounting the few ones that we just caught would be kind of our plan moving forward.
So I guess we've set this one aside already in the other budget, is that right? Or did I hear?
Budgeted funds last year for a new ambulance that we didn't touch. The three used trucks we got were out of contingency and then, um, the funding that even set aside at Riverside Station.
So that funding's there, right?
The, um, the contingency in last year that was set aside, the five hundred thousand dollar contingency, what is remaining in that contingency would fund one of the trucks. And then we have the L A C T F funds that is available for the second one that was included on the letter.
It'd be nice to have.
Funds available.
It'd be nice to have the five, to pull one to have it remounted, you have to have something take its place, and we're kind of right.
Be back at the end of the line if we went that route, so we'd be probably eighteen months out.
We've done a lot, and I think like this is like, to me, it's like the last, the last piece of the puzzle here to get us where we want to be as far as starting to drop these in, have realistic trucks to remount. Um, the funding's there, I'm gonna make the motion, we approve it, agenda item twenty-five.
Are we fixing to get the ones we ordered?
We're gonna get two in December. Those were purchased.
Of this year.
A R P funds, yes, sir, back in twenty twenty-two. That's how long we've been waiting for those trucks, and fingers crossed they'll be here in December.
So.
You're saying next October on the other three?
The two that are on the letter of intent that was placed.
Yeah, I'll cycle that, Bill.
This year budget, this year that we're in right now, did we budget it for new ambulance?
Yes, sir, we did, and that would be the second, the other one that's on this letter of intent.
That's gonna be the second one for here?
Yes, sir.
That's where the funding's gonna come from?
Uh, it's my understanding that the second one will come from the L A C T F funds. Uh, a hundred thousand of what's in the ambulance purchase contingency for the current budget will be used on the striker boxes that will go in these two ambulances, and there is remaining money in a contingency for ambulances in the current budget. During the budget, the court was not willing to commit directly for the ambulance, they wanted it in the contingency fund because the discussion was whether to buy a new ambulance or to use it to remount all the two ambulances that we had, but there is money there for additional ambulances or remounts, uh, in, in the twenty-five budget.
Do we ever get a price on remounts?
The remount, yes, sir. Um, the most recent one that I have to remount, one of the used trucks that we got, uh, the most recent used truck that we got to remount it and redo the stretcher system in it is three hundred and thirty-five thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. So we would only be able to remount one truck anyways.
Brand thirty-five thousand, or we can buy a brand-new one for two ninety-five?
And you can put the structure in all of it.
Mind, uh, two ninety-five is the chassis.
Yeah, it doesn't have all the equipment in it.
About another hundred and fifty thousand-ish in equipment that is in addition to that cost of ambulance.
Yeah, any other questions?
Would you send us that information? Please.
I got a motion and second all in favor raise your hand. Twenty-six, discuss and take action on the purchase of two striker stretcher systems at the cost of sixty-three thousand four oh seven fifteen cents each to be paid from remaining L A T C F revenue sharing funds with a balance from fiscal year twenty twenty-five capital contingency funds.
So with these two trucks, we will have to get the stretcher systems for them, which is a separate purchase from Frazier. So Frazier is the ambulance's striker, is the, um, stretcher systems, and unfortunately, the price for each system went up about sixteen grand from the last time we ordered, less than two years ago. Um, so a whole new stretcher system is running about sixty-four thousand dollars for even dealing which is really disheartening to me when they did not cost that much the last time I bought them. Um, but if we want to have the auto load systems where we're, you know, safer for patients and our workers, then that's.
That's pretty much the industry standard now anyway, right, to keep.
Patricia, how much money was in that L A T C F fund?
Uh, there's, I think it's around three hundred and twenty-eight thousand left in that fund, so the three twenty-eight minus the two ninety, roughly thirty thousand left to apply toward these stretchers. So, uh, the budget amendment, Chelsea later takes a hundred thousand out of the twenty-five capital contingency with the amount over a hundred thousand coming from these L A T C F funds.
Out of contingency or EMS contingents?
EMS capital contingency.
We, we have it.
Okay. I'd make the motion to approve agenda item twenty-six as presented.
Move and signal in favor raise your hand.
Thank you, Rachel.
Twenty-seven, discuss and take action on D A roof repair quote from Jayco Roofing in the amount of thirty-five thousand two hundred and sixty dollars to be paid from budget funds.
This project was presented very well, the budget requests here, and the funding was approved after the thirty two sixty. I have to go check the price, it might go up, so I'm seeking for approval to move forward.
Larry, I was reading in the materials here, and at one point it says some leaks may occur due to the existing condition of the roof. Is that before you fix it or after you fix it? Need to be clear on this.
Pretty important sentence there.
Sound number four. And they say will not be responsible for leaks or possible interior damage.
Oh, well, we don't have anything going on over there right now that I'm worried about giving us any leaks, which, which almost to the tipping point over there. It's an asphalt roof that's there now. The exterior of the asphalt roof is in good condition, but, uh, the UV and everything is degrading it quite a bit.
I read, I read it as the existing building's condition. Jayco Roofing is not responsible for existing building conditions, although, and then he talks about leaks and interior.
Well, that's kind of the way I would read it too, but you know.
I'm not a lawyer either.
I know you can twist things around if you're an attorney, right?
We get twisted back on them.
Yeah, basically just saying as they're prepping it, putting their stuff up there if it leaks a little bit.
This time I have the qualifications and clarifications.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway.
Had good luck with this guys anyway, I think.
Just read that and it caught my.
Yeah.
This is the first time we're gonna use this company.
Yes, sir, we have used this product. And, uh, the, the thing that I like most about this product is the, the installation, the maintenance and everything that goes, goes into it is dictated by Duralast.
Yeah, this is the same one.
They're all, they're all manufactured, trained.
Yeah, same one we put on my next.
This is the same.
Same route, yeah, different company.
Yes, same route, different vendor.
I'm good with it.
I make a motion, we accept number twenty-seven. Uh, Mount Mountain City thirty-five two sixty.
I'll second that.
Move and signal in favor raise your hand. Motion case. Thank you, Larry. Twenty-eight, discuss and take action on the purchase of Ford F-150 for planning development in the amount of forty-six thousand eight hundred dollars from Sam's Bassdrop Ford.
Morning. We'd received approval to go out and get a truck for planning and development. We went and got our bids, and we are asking now to that to same.
You got one that's bill pick is lower than the other one, but it says no truck currently in stock.
You're correct. It's six weeks to get it or longer, but he doesn't have an order or built. Uh, this one, uh, we had provided that they're, uh, they are in the process of, uh, getting on buy board. getting on buy board. And so, uh, they are not as of yet. That's why we bid it out. Uh, but this is the only one that we're buying this way.
Is it in comparison to buy board when you bid it out versus buy?
This is cheaper.
Can you wait six weeks in here or not?
Where were you? Whatever you guys recommend. I'd much rather stay local if we could.
I mean, they got the bid, you know, so. But I mean. So your vehicle is still up and running? Now?
There we go. The county best deal was filed. Build back the net to get this more within six weeks?
I'm, I have not talked to Mr. Fick himself, but, um, the salesman that we've been dealing with is all I'm talking to.
Let's know that trucks are hard to get period and hard to get in. We're talking about six weeks.
How was it bid, Mr.?
I'm not talking about it.
You have to have it in stock or not?
Um, yes, we, we asked for, I want to think, uh, the specs felt. I mean, this is second before I speak.
Was it the same vehicle?
Right. They, uh, they have offered. Is it a twenty-five? Hold on. Can't see with them. Can't see without.
He mentions everything else. That's a concern.
That, and I, I don't, I don't want to miss any.
No, we have a, I said, put on twenty-four.
Well, somebody had offered twenty-five, or we had put in.
Twenty-eight, I mean.
Twenty-two.
No, that was that.
Grand, right?
Yeah.
That's for the grand.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what it's.
It was the same vehicle?
The Planet Ford bid a, a twenty-five, uh, that's why they were so expensive. Cause we had asked for a twenty-four model.
The Bassdrop one is a twenty-four?
I'm sorry?
The Bassdrop one is a twenty-four?
Mm-hmm.
Bill's ordering one. Bill Fix ordered one. It's gonna be a twenty-five as well.
Well, I don't know. I, I'm not gonna say that. I don't know.
Hunt around and find.
I'm sorry?
He may hunt around and find one versus ordering one. There's no telling on that one there. Yeah, so.
Well, Bill's the cheapest and we can wait six weeks.
Why can't we just approve this amount of money until we go buy?
Six weeks.
Why can't we pay this amount of money?
So we could call him and then we'll. Well, why don't we give? If he can get the truck in. Why don't, why don't we?
Can we just approve the amount for her to go buy? Whether it's Bill or first priority Bill, and if he can't get it in in six weeks, we'll go to the same there.
That's what I was gonna say, yeah.
All right, perfect.
Ms. Allen, I know you don't like that, but she makes it easier.
Need to award the bid to a vendor in an amount. Now, um, certainly you could recess until tomorrow and let Cheryl do some research and come back.
Two of them are gonna be gone. We got training.
Or you could approve for her to do the research and bring back to court two weeks.
Can you, can you just step out in the hall? Two weeks down the road. We need to make a decision now. Why don't we show her down to the end of the agenda? Let her go call Bill Fick in the hallway.
All right, we're gonna.
Can you make that?
Come back to that. All right, let's get through your next two and we'll come back to that one.
Well, the, you gotta skip on the second one until I get the first one done. Cause I was asking to go ahead and.
How about we just go thirty-one? We'll come back to all yours.
Yeah. That'd work.
Okay. Thirty-one, discuss and approve order twenty twenty-five dash zero seven, amending the budget for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
It's amending the twenty-four. Requesting ten thousand five hundred, uh, coming from contingency, eight thousand going to, uh, planning and development, engineering, vehicle registration. A voter registration, I think, one thousand dollars, Sheriff Estre, one thousand dollars. I'm sorry, voter registration is. I T hardware and software from budgeted funds not spent. Uh, requesting to send a hundred and four thousand of that to the projects funds, uh, to increase those budgets for, uh, court review next year for purchases. Voter registration, adding the fifteen hundred. Facilities, transferring twenty thousand from H VAC projects that was not, uh, spent, moving that to the projects fund. Uh, auditors, financial systems, forty thousand that was not spent, requesting to transfer that to the financial projects in the projects fund. Central courts, thirteen thousand, upholding, uh, twelve judicial district for, uh, legal fees for twenty twenty-four. Sheriff's Department, uh, recording funds in the Hyde of Grant. Some of that money going to the salaries and benefits overtime for the Hyde of Officers. Fourteen thousand nine forty-five, uh, coming, uh, transferred to projects fund. These are deputy, things that were budgeted for the deputies that were spent. Uh, twenty thousand going to the operations budget from the Hyde of Money. And then transferring, uh, vehicle outfitting to projects funds that was not completed in twenty-four. Sheriff Estre, uh, adding a thousand dollars to the budget. Uh, Constable Precinct four camp, uh, transferring equipment to the projects fund. And the vehicle that was not purchased to the projects fund. County jail, moving money between operations and salaries. Planning and development showing the eight thousand coming in. And then a summary of the things coming from general fund going to the projects fund, total of three hundred and seven thousand. In the capital projects fund, we had originally earlier in the year transferred a million dollars. Uh, the two in Roden Bridge Fund did recorded FEMA transfer. What this budget amendment will do is, uh, budget in the Roden Bridge Fund, the money to cover the expenditures for FEMA this year and then budget FEMA revenues to offset. Healthy County Initiative, fifteen hundred part of your funds. Second page, Roden Bridge, showing the million dollars not coming in. But in each of the precinct budgets, you will see money coming in from FEMA. And the budget being increased by that amount. So Roden Bridge Precinct one, two hundred forty-nine thousand, four forty-one. Roden Bridge two, five seventeen, six eighty-six. Roden Bridge three, two eighty-five, eight ninety-nine. Roden Bridge four, six hundred sixty-four thousand, four nineteen. So all of these monies are coming in as FEMA revenue and then the budget is being increased by a like amount. Uh, and Roden Bridge three, five hundred and sixty-one dollars worth of revenue being recorded. Uh, and, uh, ten thousand dollars transferred from operations to capital.
Patricia, what is the insurance proceed? And then what is that?
Which one?
In my Roden Bridge three versus operation storms, then the, the reasoning on the right-hand column over there says insurance proceed. It's in all of our category.
Oh, and that is totally wrong. It should say, uh, FEMA revenues.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Sorry, did not correct that. And that is a wrong description. Obviously copy and paste. But those are the FEMA expenditures that showed up in each of the budgets. And that amount is equal to the amount of revenues that are showing up in those budgets.
Okay.
EMS fund, uh, thirty-one thousand in insurance, uh, refunds going to operations. Seventy-five thousand coming out of the, uh, contingency to pay for the chassis. And even though the ambulances aren't received until October of next year, when the chassis are delivered, we pay for the chassis. And then pay for the outfitting when they're delivered. And then the hundred and seventy-five thousand you see coming out of that is that money being transferred over to the projects fund. Fifty thousand coming out of regular contingency for a total of two twenty-five, five eighty-three going to the projects fund to pay for the outfitting of the ambulance. Next page, uh, showing, we'll see. End of year. Showing money coming in from general fund, money coming in from EMS. And then you will see in the this amendment column, the changes to the budget. So out of the two projects, we're, uh, moving money to. And then adding money coming into that, uh, project. Software, that's money coming from the I T budget. Ten thousand money coming from the I T budget in general. Facilities, this is the H VAC projects coming in and then money going out to capitalize some of the H VAC projects. Sixteen hundred and ten dollars. We have a project that was complete. Uh, projects, capital, I T. This was money that was, um, spent from the I T, but, uh, projects that needed to be capitalized. Forty thousand coming into financial systems. And then at the bottom, we have, uh, the Constable Reserve Deputy that was budgeted in projects, uh, eighteen thousand of that was spent, eighteen thousand nine oh three, a thousand ninety-seven that will be budgeted in general fund from now on. Showing the sheriff equipment coming in, the constable equipment coming in. And then our L A T C F funds, we spend a total of eighteen thousand, two sixty-one in non-capital items. And then we will have, uh, three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars left in that fund. And that will be what is used toward the second ambulance and part of the striker system. And then the other two hundred and twenty-five thousand, that's what will be used on, uh, the outfitting of the first ambulance. The, uh, three hundred and seven thousand, this is, uh, vehicles, excuse me, vehicles and outfits. All that money I think has been spent, the three hundred and seven sheriff outfit, adding the sixty-two, adding constable vehicle. And a couple of more projects that are complete. Sorry, that was a lot.
Make a motion to approve item thirty-one.
As presented. Move the second to all in favor raise your hand. Motion case. Thirty-two, discuss and approve order twenty twenty-five dash oh four oh eight, amending the budget for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Let's order on this one. The first one is thirty-two hundred ninety-seven dollars from contingency to the D A's budget. And the, uh, PCs that were included in the budget this year, basically the quote was that in the live computers. This is the increase to buy the, the ten budgeted computers. The EMS fund, uh, we're taking out of the capital contingency. There's a whole total of four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars that was budgeted in that capital contingency. And that included ambulance and several other pieces of, of capital equipment. Taking a hundred thousand out of that, that would fund a portion of the striker boxes. Leaving three hundred and ninety-one thousand in that fund. And then of course, transferring the hundred thousand capital equipment. Uh, recording the C D A S V twenty-two grant. Uh, Roden Bridge, uh, you'll see for each precinct, the estimate of how much needs to be spent on the, uh, FEMA projects we've got going on right now. In precinct one, the estimate is three hundred thousand. So that money is added to revenues and added to operations. Precinct two, the estimate is five hundred thousand. So that is added to revenues and added to expenditures. Precinct three, seventy thousand estimated to spend added to revenues and expenditures. And precinct four, sixty thousand added to revenues and expenditures. And of course, these numbers will be adjusted up or down depending on the actual amount spent. And then each precinct has three hundred thousand dollars added for every forward funds. And then Roden Bridge precinct will transfer money from operations to capital to fund the PCB. Second page, projects fund. This is all the open projects and how much is left in each of those projects. And, um, so we, I won't read them to you. We'll point out a couple on, um, that, uh, that were adjusted, uh, in the current budget, not just transfer. But we have, uh, fifteen thousand dollars that was added to contracts this year. Safe House contract and the time to a re-contract. About sixty-two or sixty-three hundred of that was funded with, um, some money that was received on the, uh.
Mid-south money.
Yeah, the mid-south money, uh, we received from that with the bulk coming from contingency. And then thirty thousand out of contingency to fund the facilities.
So that White Station project, that's one from several years ago.
Yeah, and that money was actually set aside many years ago when the state was thinking about building a new building, which is there now. And they had requested the county fund the replacement of utility poles. So that project really is no longer open.
How do we get rid of it?
That is, that wish, I mean, that motion?
Yeah, well, I'm just asking. I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna slide them, but we've, we've got the new building in place.
Right.
It's just gonna, it's already been sitting there four or five years. Just gonna let it sit there.
That's up to court.
Move it. Didn't they?
Oh, my God. Things to tell you.
My generator. That's in the right part of it.
I mean, if we take it out, it just jumps over to projects.
It goes in project.
So, yeah, I got a problem. If you want to make a motion, I'll second it.
It's not on agenda.
I'll bring it back.
Okay, bring it back. That's what I meant next meeting. I forgot to say that.
Yeah. Are there any other ones? That, that one just, we've, I've asked about it before. It's been there forever. Uh, do we need to all look at this and clean it up a little bit? I think the rest of them.
I think definitely can go through and, and look at it and then, um, yeah, and have a discussion. I, uh, discuss and approve item where y'all can make some motions if you, if you choose. Uh, and as, uh, Michelle said, uh, budget amendment, but remove it from a specific project and move it.
Motion to approve item thirty-two as presented.
I'll second that.
Moving same to all in favor raise your hand. Motion case.
Thank you.
Thirty-three, discuss and take action on accepting donation from Trinity Signature Homes for the repairs to Roma Lane and the amount thirty-two hundred.
We finally received the check for some damage that was done by one of the, uh, contractors in Grand Ranch. So this is to accept the money and put it back in Roden Bridge too. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Move the same to all in favor raise your hand. Motion case. Thirty-four, discuss and take action to allow Judge Christian and Commissioner Kirkendall to talk to Texas Department of Justice about the Future Justice Center project. That'll be my motion. Move the same to all in favor raise your hand. Motion case. Thirty-five. Discuss and take action to authorize Road Bridge Precinct three to purchase a used front-end loader from a dealer, auction, or private seller in the amount not to exceed fifty thousand.
The case loader that we had just lost the engine in it last Thursday. It was already on the auction block, so we're, um, we're looking for another one. And normally for these, you just kind of walk up on them, whether it's auction, private guy. So just getting this approval will allow me to, to make a deal without having to wait two weeks to come to court. So that'd be my motion.
Sell them back.
No, no.
My motion.
I'll give you a second to buy something else, not much.
Yeah, a motion and a second.
I do.
Uh, all in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you, Bill.
Thirty-six, discuss and take action to authorize Road Bridge Precinct three to purchase a used water truck from a dealer, auction, or private seller in a mountain not to exceed fifty thousand.
Same story on this one. Um, if we come up on one, I'd like to be able to get it. So my motion would be to approve agenda item thirty-six as presented. Second.
Moving same to all in favor raise your hand. Motion case. We'll go, Cheryl, are you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay, we'll go back to number twenty-eight. Discuss and take action on the purchase of Ford F-one-fifty for planning and development.
Okay. Oh, I talked to Bill Fick. I talked to Matt Ninson there. And he said, uh, that they do not have a truck. There is none to be located. But he would have to go out and look for one. Now, the truck that we have for, at Sains. Now, the truck that we have for at Sames, I talked to Gabby and he said it has a three oh two motor in it. It doesn't have that EcoBoost, which he said is what most of them have now. He prefers this three oh two, and it is a twenty four model.
Yeah, all right, well, I say we just go with him, man.
I think we go with him.
At this point, thank you for researching that though.
You're more than welcome.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Who are we going with?
The same.
But, okay.
Motion for to spend to purchase a truck for forty six thousand eight hundred from Sames Bastropport.
That's it.
I second it.
Moving second law, favor raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty nine, discuss and take action on prepayment of Ford F one fifty for planning development to have check in hand when picking up the vehicle.
I make the motion to approve agenda item twenty nine.
Moving second law, favor raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty, discuss and take action to use Renee Bates Auctioneer Incorporated for the disposal of pre-approved vehicles and equipment. Would be my motion.
I'll second that. I like them.
Moving second law, favor raise your hand.
Great, just letting you know that November the first is when that auction opens. It will close on the fifteenth, we'll have viewing on the thirteen.
What on the thirteen? Viewing. Go come look at that case load.
Everything that's gonna be in this auction.
I, I.
What, what all do we have?
I had twenty vehicles. I've got a tank. I've got a roller and a
And a loader.
Boom, boom rag, what is?
You can send us a list, though.
What is that? I don't know, but I'll get it for you, yes.
Okay. I got a good deal on the loader if you want to buy it before it burns.
Mm, tell me what I do, Bill, like, let it go through the auction.
Thank you, Michelle.
It's be all right.
Thirty seven, discuss and take action on the determination of unrestricted use under section three ten of floodplain management regulations of Walker County in regards to permitting for the proposal. Jameson Lake spillway project.
Did y'all be present but not? Oh, it's uh, it's the
I was gonna make a motion to waive the
Derek's here, guys, got any questions?
This is on the last.
They're requesting that under our existing policy, there's a section of the yield of agricultural bonds and fish entries and those kinds of things. There's not a building that's being built per se, and they included a development certification that won't change the um, stream, but they're not altering the stream channel, that there won't be an impact to doing the progress. So they're asking for basically the court to consider them as of
Unrestricted use.
That would waive my responsibility for.
I make the motion to approve agenda item thirty seven as presented.
Moving second law, favor raise your hand. Those, Kirkendall's.
Presenting that vote.
Yep. Thirty eight, discuss to take discuss and take action on enforcer USA Real Estate Group Incorporated request for variance to section five oh three of the floodplain management regulations of Walker County for the proposed Sweetwood Development and ETJ. Morning.
Morning.
Hi, I'm Joseph, the EHR agent. Both my Joseph. So, our development here is adjacent to zone A and Robinson Creek. Uh, what we're proposing is to bring the variance to not having to study the adjacent stream uh, in the area of development. Uh, our intent is to uh, have all of our development located outside of zone A, the approximate floodplain. Uh, in addition to that, we have the established, uh, the, it is study upstream of our development about a thousand feet. And so we're taking that highest BFE and uh, raising all of our lots above that. So in that way, we believe we're going above and beyond the FEMA regulations. And also FEMA, FEMA's guidance, zone A's, our respective development is to, for the developer and the community to work together to develop outside of it. And uh, and additionally, we have some uh, there is, I guess, test available data, which is Texas Water Development Warhags. Given us some preliminary information. And BFEs associated with that are lower than the upstream established BFE. So our intent is to hold that established BFE uh, in, in, trying to get variance, not having to study the stream all the way through. Um, and so that's.
Where's this at?
This is right there, Andy Wright, thirteen seventy four, right past Robinson.
Right, right, kind of across from
Joe Smith land. So you're, you're backing up the Robinson Creek.
So for the court's clarity, we're not regulating the subdivision relation itself. Jason, who is, I'm doing that, but we have to be and our policy requires it to be studied. Um, so that's why they're before you to do grants under the floodplain, but we're not, we're not regulating streets and detention and that kind of stuff, that's all under the city of Huntsville.
Well, we need to make a statement anyway, because if we're not regulating but it needs to meet our standards because we've dealt with this in the past in the ETJ. So if you don't meet our standards, are you asking for public maintenance after it's over?
I believe, no, our, our mind will maintain this uh, this space.
Well, but we are, just to be clear, we are regulating this particular thing, so floodplain studies and, and floodplain reviews are under our regulations do apply to this project. Um, this is outside of the subdivision. Just to make it clear that the city's got one hand in, and we're, we're regulating just this one thing.
I understand. Yeah, I, I totally understand, but it's definitely a conflict when it comes down to us taking the roads in the end. So I kind of want to point it out to them, you need to meet our standards also. So if, if you don't and you're asking for public maintenance, I will not recommend coming public maintenance. So we need to be clear on that.
I, I will add that we did, you know, submit the principle, we have a painter along our development plan that includes our detention that's adjacent to the stream.
And our, our engineer is not recommending that we approve the variance that you're asking for, is that what I'm reading here?
Yes, sir.
I, I will add that, you know, FEMA's guidance with respect to zone A is that, you know, if we stay out of it completely, you're, you know, required to study it, then we, it would likely be smaller uh, and lower than the BFE we're establishing. And at that point, we want to develop in zone A, in what is currently zone A.
But you are, but you are impacted.
We're not, we're, we're staying out of it. So all of our development is staying outside of zone A, which is the, I guess, the current floodplain.
But what I'm getting at is your development does dump into Robinson Creek.
It does, but we are, we, we have detained, uh, so we're placing our detention base on adjacent to it. So we are detaining for our health. And uh, and in that city council, it was approved, you know, planned to charge into Robinson Creek at a, less than we were before.
Are they reviewing it or have they approved it?
They approved it.
You have a, you have a drainage plan approved by the city of Huntsville? And, and construction plan for the entire development?
Uh, our construction plans are reviewed, uh, as with the city of Huntsville and Walker County, so I guess there's dual uh, jurisdiction, but as far as the drainage plan with the detention, the city of Huntsville has approved that.
You know, the city of Huntsville has approved a lot of stuff that conflicts with the county, and we're working on making that better, but it's not there yet. Uh, Derek, I know you wrote this, because I saw your name, right?
How many lots you got?
How many lots is it?
Five hundred ninety two.
Five ninety two.
Hmm, just what I made on thirteen seventy four.
Can I make a, I guess, couple of clarifications of where my, my letter is coming from? Um, so the drainage plan approved by the city of Huntsville, it relates to uh, them adding impervious cover and making sure they don't impact flows downstream, meaning increasing flow. Our concern is more related around the floodplain. Uh, there's two concerns there, one is are the, the structures they're building, the homes they're building, are they elevated above, above the floodplain? Because obviously, you know, a bunch of people buying houses out there, there are going to be issues later because they're under the floodplain, flood insurance get flooded. Um, and I, they've done a great job doing that. They, like he said, they've stayed outside of the zone A. Uh, I think they've made conservative est- estimates to raise uh, those homes well above that floodplain. Really don't have any issues with that. Uh, where our concern is, is um, when you look at the zone A, and y'all are familiar with this, a lot of times, zone A does not match closely to the real world. Um, nobody knows where those maps came from, a lot of them are based on some, some estimates, I think, that were done a long time ago. And so if you look at contour data compared to the, the shape of the zone A, you've got a lot of elevation difference from one side to the other. Uh, the, the lower elevation is on the side of where they're proposing the homes and the development. Um, the, the guidance from FEMA does uh, address that issue as well, where they say, you know, if you have, you know, there's some uncertainty involving zone A, so if you have a, a gradual grade from the edge of zone A outside to where your homes and your development are, I need to likely study it because we're, we're realizing we're just kind of making a estimate here. And there's a possibility that that variation could cause a, a big change in that shape just because of the gradual grade. So uh, the lower portion, kind of the, I call it kind of like a peninsula of the green area there, uh, that's fairly uh, low starting out compared to the zone A as well as where the detention pond is going. And so going back to, our concern's not the elevation of the homes, our concern is more about there's fill and grading happening to build the burn for the pond, there obviously has to be filled to raise those homes up. And what we need to see is some verification that that fill in these areas that appear based on the contours to be consistent with where it may flood based on flood elevations, he mentioned the BFE kind of preparing those BFE elevations, the contours, things like that. All that area does encroach some in there, and so we need to make sure that fill does not impact the floodplain in a way that would affect other people that maybe didn't build their house up high enough. Maybe we're impacting Robinson Road, there's a, a lot of potential there, so.
Well, this is where I've been going a while ago, Derek, because if, if the impacts, if we don't figure out what kind of impact it's doing to Robinson Creek, then you've got Bowden Road right down the road that takes, if there is more of an impact to Bowden Road, which could potentially wash some of it up. I mean, we're all seeing roads with, with this development that are places where water has crossed, it's never crossed before, and the development hasn't affected.
And that's a very vicious creek. I've lived on that creek since I was a kid. And live there again now, and it's just amazing what the water does on Robinson Creek.
I mean, you catch everything coming from town to, you know, it all goes and uh, it don't stay up long, but it, when it's up, it's weak. And, and every, every development we put up and down that thing has an effect on it.
So, so there are situations where when you look at the zone A, where they're filling and developing, there's, there's a lot of elevation change and, and you, you basically just common sense tells you, hey, you know, they're not really affecting anything here. Unfortunately, to me, this is too close to, to call just based on not taking a closer look at it and doing a little bit of study to show we don't have an issue.
Well, with the engineer's advice, I would say we're going to deny, deny the uh, that's my motion.
I'll second that.
Moving same to law, favor raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty nine. Discuss and take action on Simco Group LLC request for variance to section B twelve point eight A of the Walker County subdivision regulations regarding detention facilities for the proposed Jones Reserve subdivision.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. Yeah, yeah.
I'm working with Anderson Payne, this year representing the client. Before you start it, this is not the same McManus that some of you Texan fans are obsessed about, that kicked the winning field goal yesterday. You can make no claim to that. What, what we're asking for is it's a little difficult to split a hair, but in this particular case, there is an exception that exists already within subdivision regulations, twelve point eight. It says that an exception can be or may be allowed if the owner demonstrates that no adverse effect occurs to neighboring property. And, and this is in regard to detention, and it goes to all those things. What we ended up doing to begin with was we went to the whole, uh, it's a sixty acre tract, large lot, uh, large acres tract. And, and what we ended up doing, we analyzed the entire property and showed the property splits in a couple of different directions. About half, the, the majority of where the development would impact. Uh, we provided detention. Detention ended up being a little over a hundred thousand dollars to mitigate one C F. Also request to mitigate point one CFS off of the eleven acre area where one house is being built. So we went back, we met with Andy. This is kind of the path forward, go through with this, we see uh, there could be the option that if we just improved a couple of where the driveways are cutting across instead of trying to detain the, the existing owner of that tract owns the large acres tract that, that abuts the creek. Drain, he is willing to give a drainage system as big as he needs to allow whatever water comes through to get to the creek, but based on what we understand from not just floodplain development, but just water development in general. And I think there's been something earlier, last minute something earlier that was proved where there's, that was actually in the floodplain that generally requires a, a study to be done. One, I think, even non-engineers understand in order to do what they were asking to do on that driveway, doesn't require a study. If no, and y'all prove that, and that's easy to see. The next, the last request that you, that was made, it is a little bit more difficult to see that. Now, we are not in the floodplain, there's no floodplain that touches this property, but there is a creek. And Water Beltboard has looked at uh, the creek up to where this property is. So what we decided to do is we're going to go above and beyond minimum requirement for floodplain studies, just to show that there's, and, and if you look at the last request previously, and what they're stating is that they're sort of finding that there's that without studying it, they are saying in, in its rhythm, that there is no anticipation of any change and that the floodplain levels will be similar to what they were to begin with, and that there's nothing expected uh, to, to change. What we did was we actually went through the entire property, and we looked at the nine hundred acre watershed that it's in upstream adjacent to, and everything down to that one. And we showed our development doesn't cause zero point zero zero, I mean, it causes zero impact to the water surface elevations all the way down. Uh, and that's, it's a tributary to Penny Creek, which goes through uh, right there past the manners and past one fifth. And so what we're trying to do is show that by building a couple of houses on this large acres tract, that up to a point, and we've defined with that development plan, up to a point, we will be, believe and have signed and sealed uh, and done a complete study showing not just from that property, but from the entire watershed down through that creek, all the way down to neighboring properties and, and future developments that are occurring right now, not going to be an impact. Or, or source elevations go, and that, that's actually above and beyond certain requirements. Zone A says you can't do any more than that, so we're actually doing what what Andy would probably call it, a zone A E study to show that there's no adverse impacts. FEMA finds that, and, and we tried to do this above and beyond what Walker County's requirements would be. And again, if you get two engineers in a room, you get six different opinions on something, right?
I'll agree with that.
You, you get, uh, Andy sees septic systems being designed and while he has a state requirement that he has to hold, what he I, I, I've seen a, a number of them, Andy has never said, hey, you've designed four sprinklers, don't do that, do three. Or, I know you want to use a drip meter system, but I think she's great, he never gets into that aspect of it, he just says this is what's required, and what we're trying to do is and, and we can work out engineering stuff, but what we're looking at is, and I don't know if it's a variance or not, because it's an exception that's already allowed. But what we're trying to do is to show that we're not trying to meet we're trying to show that what's, what we're proposing out within the limitations that we've on the proposal, that we're not our goal is to not have any impact downstream or, or next to the Our goal is to not have any impact downstream or, or next to the neighbors.
Okay. Have you sent your proposal in to Andy?
Yes, we have.
Got our response back yet?
It's under review. We were trying to get it done before court. We were doing our best. We had not done that. They submitted some supplemental information last week as well, so we're working our way through that. Um, but I'm just, just to recap, where you tell me if I was misstating this. Your position is that, that, that if you're allowed to, to not build this particular swale of tension, which is what you're asking not to do, that there will be, um, uh, no adverse impact on adjacent properties. And your client will, will save a whole bunch of money.
Correct. And, and the adjacent property, the downstream property is actually his property.
That's just thirty-seven acre track.
Yes. Uh, so, so there's a, where the, where the creek. So right in here, we were proposing to do detention within this well. And that detention is going to be about two feet, about forty feet wide, uh, in a, in a natural drainage area. We're going to impound it behind the driveway. Hit one of the proposed onsite development driveways. There's no driveway that goes to this existing acre stretch back here. It's already got a house on it. If we instead just improved both driveways and created a drainage, private drainage management, this is his property also. It's not part of the plan. He just wants to leave that, uh, an exceptional variance to plating, uh, the track earlier to do that. This track, including this area right here, is, is, this is the creek. And the floodplain starts right up here. As the zone A floodplain. What we did was we took this, and this is north is that way. So we took everything, uh, that goes out by Alina thirteen seventy-five, that watershed. This area and all of this area south. And we did an analysis of how much rainfall falls in the hundred year range. And what that does at this point right here, we carried the existing condition and the proposed condition, compared those two to the water surface elevations in the existing. We carry that all the way down. Almost two miles. And we showed that, and, and we gave a we show that there's, it's, it's not that there's negligible impact. It's not that there's a anticipation of, we don't think anything can happen. The statement is that there is zero rise in water level elevation. And all, all we're trying to do is, is bring that to the court and say, we're not trying to sneak something through. We're not trying to get out of. This, this was going to be a hundred and sixty foot concrete weir with four sets of two by four box cars to detain one CFS. And instead of doing that, we can contain all of that. And the creek shows no.
That's a lot.
And, and we didn't carry it. Carried it all the way down. And in the CFS, the amount of flow that's in this creek, at this point right here is almost two thousand CFS. So you're looking at one out of two thousand. So that's not even one percent. It's not even point one percent. It's point zero five percent increase in just the flow. Which in most cases, you'll probably find that anywhere else, you'll consider that to be negligible when you increase the flow from one, even in.
Okay, Joe, I don't, I don't know. We're getting way too far in the weeds.
Alright, so, um, so for the court, three, I, I would tell you, there are three options that I can see. One is the court approves it without the engineer review. I do not recommend that. Now, two is the court does a contingent approval based on an objection from our engineer on the review. Or three is you, you, you deny it today or pass on today, ask them to bring it back next court with the review. Um, I don't, if you think of course, I should be my guest, but those are the.
Now, my, my recommendation and my motion is going to be to move forward with this upon contingent upon, uh, no objection from our reviewer.
Engineer, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Say one thing real quick.
So they're not going to bring it back?
If, as long as we get an objection. If we get not an objection, then yes.
Looks like he stood up. He's going to need an objection.
So I, I don't, I don't disagree with anything that Joe's saying. Um, the reason it's probably a variance is the, the, what we're talking about, is that this is in the county, right? This is full jurisdiction. So the, the, the ordinance says, uh, zero increase in flow. And Joe's, what he's saying is there's slight increase in flow, but there's zero, zero increase in the floodplain elevation. So you are actually going against one part of the ordinance and saying, hey, we're going to be okay with the idea that there's a slight increase in flow as long as all the engineers agree that that's really not going to be an impact. So that, that's, I just want to make sure that's clear, so that when Lyles reviewing it, we know that you're okay with that idea, because we can't just review it against the ordinance and say, oh yeah, well, it's fine because it's not zero, right? So it's the whole idea of it's zero versus slightly above zero.
Thank you for that clarification. That's good.
So all these are big tracks all with this one, right?
Yes.
There's a couple of three acres in there.
There's some on the, on the north end, on the turn side. There's some smaller tracks along that side.
But they actually, so on those, there, there's a couple of small acreage tracks up here. That's a smaller acreage, three, two, two per acre. They actually drain through that lake right there. And then, and then it goes on down.
And to, and to be clear, our, our review and no objection to the regulations does not give any waiver to their responsibility to adjoining properties. So they still are responsible to the joint owners to not damage their property. We're not taking that away from them.
And, and the county's not at risk.
Yeah, you get a second, friend?
Yeah, we got a motion to see. Any other questions, discussion?
No question.
All in favor, raise your hand. Number forty, discuss and take action on Bruce and Judy Wigtin and request for variance to onsite service facility regulations of Walker County for continued use of unpermitted onsite service facility on their property.
I was given some bad advice. We bought our property here in Walker County, uh, in two thousand seven. Uh, two thousand eight. But we built a six thirty by sixty shop and garage. That's it. Uh, I needed a septic system for that. Moving from the city to the country, talked to Paul Robert. So Paul Robert, that's exactly what I'm saying. Bad advice was, I'm not in the city, county, you don't need a permit. Couple of months ago, um, we're building a home on this property. Started the permit process for the new home. Um, not the septic system yet, but it was discovered at that time. I was unpermitted and they said I had a bootleg system. The advice from a contractor, I hired it here, come out, spec in, it's a new home. So septic system should be, which got the report, told them of my problem. Let me look at it. The system's been operating for sixteen years without incident. He's done soil tests. Hasn't seen a problem. This is functioning properly. I'm requesting a variance so I can continue without going to jail.
I don't think it's quite that serious.
Well, that's, that's good stuff.
So you got an engineer come out, look at the system that's currently there.
John Cotton Bonnie. Um, I have his report. If you don't have it handy.
I think we've got it. Oh, yeah, it's, I read it last night.
Um, he did soil tests when he was out there. He went with his, the binding rod verified that the, the grid lines are where I told them they were. And then I've got two five hundred gallon tank. It's a proper system for what it is. And it's been working fine for sixteen years. It was never my intention to deceive or hit fraud or by not getting a perm house told I didn't need one.
To be clear, not by us.
How much jail time you want to do?
We did have a Robert working for us back then. I'll make it clear that that was not that Robert. Um, so here's our issue. Here's our problem. This is a system that was put in well after permitting and when we were keeping track of permits and admittedly without a permit. Guys have had some systems before you guys before that were in areas where it was questionable whether or not a permit maybe had it was gotten and lost or or was done prior to code or just after the code was adopted. The, the issue here is that we have a agreement as authorization to permit septic systems in Walker County under T C Q. And completely waiving the permitting requirement without an inspection, without it coming into compliance is, I, I don't think within keeping with what we're doing with T C Q. I think that you're going to get blown back to T C Q or completely waiving the requirement for a permit unless the track is over ten acres. And y'all did one of those recently where somebody had a tractor that's over ten acres.
This is thirty-seven waiver. Thirty-seven, thirty-seven plus.
You thirty-sevens on the whole track?
Yes.
You may not have gone to jail.
Is over ten acres. So then, then, then you would be waiving a local requirement because the state allows systems without a permit if it's over ten acres. We don't. And almost no other county does that. In size of population, because they'll put them next to the, so you can, the court can probably do it under that if they want to.
You're going to get a proper system on the new house?
But I got the report in here. And then the most I'm about to get forward is justify it to.
Well, getting Mr. Cotton Bonnie out there shows you're trying to do the right thing. So, um, what have we done in the past, somebody's Andy? I don't, I don't want to go.
We, we've not done much on anything this new. Most of the court actions have been taken on stuff that we've done in the eighties, maybe even early nineties. And, and, and this era of the septic installations is very uncommon for people not to get permits.
Yeah.
So I, I know he wasn't, uh, he, he put it in, but like you said, he got some bad advice. I don't know. Uh, the system was legally installed. I don't, the things we don't know, who manufactured the tanks? How of lids they have on, any of those kinds of things. We don't have any of that. So I couldn't stand here and tell you that things will collapse at any point, that they will have issues. We've done no inspection. We don't know what's in the ground out there. However, in the state statute, there's an allowance for uh, tracks over ten acres. We have within our local that they are not allowed to. But if the court waived that requirement, our local statute under this, it wouldn't waive the state law. So the state statute would be, that's where I would, that's where I would caution you to waive some of the state mandates.
The system said it was sound. It was of quality.
So my motion is going to be that. I approve that in forty.
Could we, um, I think he should still go through some sort of permitting.
Yeah.
Process.
For us, the, the, the process to permit it would require an inspection. And we're requiring to submit details about the system that he may or may not have access to. For example, who manufactured the tanks or the manufacturing standards. I, I don't know the answer to those things.
We were talking, we're talking about waiving the one that he just got inspected.
No, the old one.
No, no, the old one.
Old one, old one, not the new one.
New one, he's.
Yeah, that's my, that's my concern is.
New one he's putting into code.
Uh, here's, here's my concern. A person with eleven acres can risk putting one in, knowing that if we catch them, we're going to say it's okay, it's over.
It would be a dangerous precedent in the city in general.
Yeah.
This is why, you, you know, before you guys.
What's our permit fee for septic system?
Uh, two hundred and ten dollars. We're just paying. Yeah, plus the development fee, but yes.
Plus the development.
He's doing a system right now, so it might be that for requiring the permit, he could tie it into the system it's doing, but it would require some additional.
I wouldn't do that, but I, my thoughts would be in lieu of a permit, having to pay a two hundred and ten dollar fee or something like that. There's something.
Let's get it.
There's got to be some sort of, there's got to be, I mean, there's got to be some sort of.
Well, I mean, the only thing, you, you do understand that if somebody did, if the system did fail, you would have to bring it back up. And, and so, I mean, that's, I don't know that Quentin's probably going to let us charge this.
No.
That we ain't never done before.
I, I got a little bit of an issue with it too, because I mean, it's, it's not that old where we look at all. Normally we look at the eighties.
Right.
That they're questionable.
I mean, what we've done in the past is go back and I think we done one other day and.
Right, had to go back and look at.
Less than a year and have it re-inspected. I mean, I mean, that probably.
I'm sorry, less than a year.
Yeah, yeah. So you go back and have somebody come back in, Catabana or whoever, and re-inspect it to make sure that there is no, no failure.
In that month.
Yeah, yeah. I, I mean, we've done that in the past.
Yeah, but those old systems.
But they were old systems, exactly.
But you know. For, for what it's worth.
And but, I mean, nerves you, that was a system that they were going to use that hadn't been in.
It was an old system, yeah.
Been sitting there.
And that's what I'm saying.
Sitting there.
That's the only thing different we've done.
Yeah.
Is.
But he's living there and the system's functional.
Yeah.
Went right now, and, and since we purchased the property, it was raw land product. As we developed the property, built this thirty by sixty workshop, and there's also a shed, a cover for our fifth wheel RV. That's what has been using this system, excuse me, for sixteen years.
Yep.
The building or the RV?
Well, both. And we, we will live in the RV while we've been waiting to build a house. Now we're building a house. The RV is going to be gone. The only thing, personal workshop for me, I like woodworking. Uh, it's not commercial, not anything. It's going to be me. Not every day, in the bathroom, in that workshop. That's all that's going to be using this system.
We could tag that on as non-residential.
It, it, it's non-residential. I've had the, the tax office, because I guess a lot of people build a bar. I've had the county out twice taking pictures. I'm in the place, you know, proving that it, we're not living there. It's workshop. So everybody knows the appraisal district is not us. I, I've had county people out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are records in the county showing that we're not living there.
We probably need to come up with a drop dead date to where we just say no. You know, and I don't know what that date would be. I mean, that'd be something we need to do a little research on, but.
After I get out of jail.
After you.
No, I mean, again, if this were, if this were a track less than ten acres.
Yeah, then you would have no choice. Yeah, and, and so I.
It's the only thing that gives you some ability to waive your own requirement because you're not waiving the state's requirement.
Much thirty-seven acres, it's a wood shop. It's not like it's a, right, non-residential, I think was the terminology. Accessory structure, non-residential accessory structure.
Yeah, I mean, if you go with non-residential, I can go along with this one, but you know, basically no residential in it.
So my motion was to give variance for forty-two, or forty. Or for non-residential, or non-residential.
Accessory.
Accessory structure.
Second.
Move the second law, favor raise your hand.
So it's a reluctant, yeah. But I think, let's get, let's get something on the books for, like you say.
A drop dead date, no, no.
I'll, I'll tell you in general, after, give me a little while, I haven't been here, but after two thousand.
Catching most of them, right?
That they were relatively, I mean, I, it hard for me to classify that in nineteen eighty-one that, you know, no permit was applied for in, in this place or anything like that. But by two, by two thousand eight, we were.
What gives me heartburn about this is, is the fact that he, he, he said he had raw land. He developed it and he got power to obstruct her, all the things, all the mechanisms that were, should have been in place in two thousand and eight. Didn't throw red flags and say, hey, you can't get power because you had, you don't have a development permit or you don't have this or that, right?
Yeah, we, we still have some power. Yes, because it'll, it'll be for a power pole only or something like that.
Just something will. Never goes away.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, number forty-one. Discuss and take action on utility placement application for Bahia Pipeline LLC on Bowden Road, Hook Road number two. Floor Road, Preston Road, Burnett Road, Ball Road, Cotton Creek Cemetery Road, Sun Dog Dipping Bat Road, Ruger, Remington, Red Hawk on Precinct Two.
So try to do the court a little favor, since we had so many of these at one time, and just split them up, precincts, instead of listing them out, thirty, yeah, right with crossings. So uh, um, you know, they've been looked at.
What's your name, Andrew? In the back.
Andrew Thomas.
Come on.
He he's a company man.
Hey, you're the man I'm looking at.
Hey, we've been talking to you.
I told you I did, well, one person.
That's right, that's right. I've heard of him, but I'll be.
Hey, it is what it is, you know, you remember that statement, I told you that.
Sure.
So, so that's why I want you up here.
I'm sorry, uh, Morris P. A. Bear Incorporated.
All right, basically, I mean, we kinda talked about this in the meeting that we had upstairs from where we're sitting. Uh, really, all I need from you is a phone call.
Yes, sir.
When y'all do these and we're gonna approve them through Ashley. So now you're getting to meet who's gonna be helping you with that.
Okay.
So call me or call the office on each one of these.
Yes, sir.
And we'll size it for you.
Okay.
We'll we'll help you with the sizing.
Okay, okay. Well, and we have the the driveway applications in um, uh, with with the planning and development office while they're.
Okay.
We we won't process those until this gets.
Right, these are the, they're just the crossings under the roads with the pipelines.
Okay, and and all y'all's, I mean, are pretty well temporary unless we agree that one's gonna be.
Yes, sir, the driveways, yes.
Okay. All right.
Our our recommendation is uh, choose to approve that it be based on the conditions and observations listed in the BLA letter, I thought this this letter right here.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to approve referencing the BLA.
October eighth.
I'm just gonna reference the last.
I guess, did I just get?
Yeah.
Man, you're calling Andrew.
Okay, two Andys here.
We don't review their claims to having proper plan and all that, that's on there.
Yeah, that's not us.
There are some other crossings that don't lead to that degree, generally, it's because they're trying to follow alignment of existing pipeline.
Have you seen this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You got a copy of it? All right. And I make a motion to approve contingent following the BLA recommendations.
So.
Don't don't get second first.
Yes, sir.
This is the forty inch pipeline, forty two, something like this, a big one?
Thirty.
No, 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 that one's got, got to a chip.
Oh, okay.
All right, I got a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion case.
Done.
Forty two, discuss and take action on utility placement application for Bahia Pipeline on Sandy Creek Farm Road, Stewart Road, Ranch Road, Justinniak Road, Old Houston Road, Marion Lane, Rogers Road, Mount Zion Road.
I have a question on this one, um. Does this one not cross Bath?
Sorry, what was it?
Does this one not cross Cotton Road?
It, Cotton was on two.
Cotton Creek Cemetery we cross.
What about Cotton Road?
No.
I don't think it does, Cotton, because it it does cross us rather up there at the, at the cemetery access road, right?
Cotton Creek Cemetery would pass.
Yeah, right.
Uh, but not.
Okay, so the big ones, it's one cross.
Probably.
Yeah, that's the next one.
All right, I'm gonna make the same motion as Ronnie made.
Same contingency?
Yep, yes, ma'am.
I'll second that.
Move the seconded, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion case. All right, Rose.
Thank you, man.
Road material workshop, who's taking the lead on that one?
We let uh Brandon take off with it and then I'll help him with it.
So we needed, we needed to find what start about what we're gonna do, what we're gonna accept with recon products. Text dot spec says one thing. Got some people here to represent. Don't know if we can get into that, but uh, we need to have a discussion on what we're gonna accept as recurring products.
Basically, I'm gonna say we're gonna go with the text dot standards and that's gonna be it, you know, they gotta meet those specifications, so that's where I'm at.
Can you read it then?
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, Andy talk first, ready?
Workshop, anybody talk on this, it's a workshop.
Y'all, y'all wanna talk?
I just can't see, so uh, I'm sure we'll talk at some point, but. Yeah.
Also, let me, uh, I guess, I don't wanna take too much of your time, I really appreciate y'all putting this workshop together, because I think it's gonna give us a good understanding, expectations moving forward, that's all, all we're looking for. I agree that you must provide a hundred percent, uh, we wanna meet the text out standard, and so um, maybe a little detail we need to work out to fully understand that and be on the same page. Uh, you know, find some good expectations moving forward. This is David Frye, he's with Frye Development. Uh, Thomas right here, he's running the project for Frye, he's their operations guy, Patrick Youngo from my office. Um, we've got two people from Terricon, they're gonna be doing the testing, so Kyle and Mark from Terricon. Thursday, so back here, so Ace is the contractor, John. Okay, we have John with Texas here, so they're all here, not necessarily because they uh need time to talk or or wanna present something uh different than what we're gonna talk about here, but here for questions and here to learn so that we can uh find a good path moving forward, so. Um, so basically, we uh, they wanna use crush concrete or aggregate base. Uh, we are getting that aggregate from Texas Materials, uh, Texas Materials sent in a uh testing report for a submittal which was reviewed by H B J with G L S. Um, and then they also uh delivered some material on site, so E J uh rejected the submittal based on uh, you know, nothing necessarily on the testing data, the testing data appeared to meet the spec, but he did see, uh, observed a lot of uh plastic, a lot of other trash within the material on site, uh, which he said was not acceptable, which we agree with, and so based on that, uh, he rejected it. We've had several conversations since then. Uh, there's been some conversation about the the testing methods, not really here to to rehash that, I think we've, we've gotten through that pretty well with uh, Commissioner Decker. Uh, that um, when we test the material, we can include uh what we're calling objectionable material, which would be the wood and plastic and stuff like that. We're not trying to to say that we can have up to one point five percent of that material, so we're, we're gonna rely on uh in that test that that material except from the test, that's fine, so there's no confusion there moving forward. Hope you agree, Mr. Decker, I think we uh kind of accomplished that on site at the plant the other day. So, there's two parts of the spec, one being, uh, you know, meeting that testing for deleterious material. Feel like, you know, if we have more questions there, I'd be glad to discuss them, but I feel like uh we're comfortable there. Uh, the other one being, you know, needs to be free from, uh, it says reinforcing steel and objectionable material. We also agree with that, so uh, the question is, at what point is it free from? So um, uh, Texas Materials, they're, they're doing more work to get as much of that out as possible. There's no real way to go onsite at Texas Materials and sit through their pile and make sure there's absolutely no material. So my understanding from saying free from is it needs to be removed. We can't just say, okay, we're okay with a little bit, we're okay with a few pieces, it's free from, so that's our goal, the way we're trying to meet that goal is once the material comes on site, it's gonna be laid on the road. It's gonna be cut to full depth, it's gonna be wind rowed, and we've got uh pickers to go down, and if there's any material left after Texas Materials is done, uh, they will pick out all the material, so at the end of the day, we'll have material that meets all the testing spec. Uh, we'll meet those spec on the deleterious material, not including the trash, uh, and also will be free from trash, so that's uh what we see is meeting the spec, um, the the situation we're in now is we have a submittal for the material that's not been approved because of the onsite inspection, onsite uh observation of the the trash that's put in the material. What we're trying to say is, the the submittal, we would think would be based on it passes the test. And the part of the spec that says it should be free from, we're asking that to be looked at when we're ready, when when they've done, finished the process of picking out the material and and we're ready to have an inspection, we're gonna lay this road, or it could be right before the the pre-paving inspection. Or it could be at any point along the way, because what we're also gonna do is our inspectors are gonna be out there, they're gonna be watching as they're wind rowing, as they're uh cutting to the full depth, and they're gonna be documenting the pictures and reports that we can provide to the county showing this is the process we went through, we were going through full depth, we didn't just drop it down and pick stuff off the top and say it's good. Um, so we'll have that full documentation, uh, T J, your inspector, or anybody else is welcome to also come observe that process. And we feel like, once we go through that process, we're ready to actually complete the road, that we will be free from per the spec. Um, so that's gonna mine.
I don't see how you can get free from all them wood chips in there that I looked at, there's millions of them.
I guess what we're asking is to let us try, um, so, you know, if the, if we're starting at the point of uh, you feel like it's impossible, I I guess we need to figure out where to go from there.
Well, that's why we got y'all up here, so you need to feel how this court's gonna be. You know, you, we can't vote on it today because it's a workshop, but you can get a feeling from us what we, what we expect.
To my, my understanding from our last meeting, the next step is uh kind of the the process I just described, um, and we'll also get into the the testing, so trying not to be too long-winded here, but there, there's, you know, several steps we're gonna take as well to to verify that the testing that we're submitting, we we now have uh between the material supplier and the developer, uh, and G L S, we have three different testing groups that are gonna be testing this material. Um, and and we're gonna make sure that the material being tested is gonna be the material to be seen on site, we're gonna have dedicated stockpiles, things like that, so that's kind of the other part of what we've talked about and what we're willing to do to make sure that the county is comfortable, um. But those are the two steps, is uh, you know, get the testing data which meets the spec and provide uh the cleaning that we've talked about and present it, uh, when it's ready to go, is free from, so.
Well, somebody explained to me, because Mr. Decker went down to the plant and followed a truck back that dumped, that was not out of a testing pile.
That's what I was fixing to bring up.
You know, I mean, so how in the hell am I supposed to trust anything said now, if you tell me it's tested?
Can I speak up?
Yes, state your name.
I'm Tom Jager, uh, I'm running the project on behalf of the developers on site. So, in an effort to make sure that we were achieving kind of a standard, um, that was thorough. I've requested the Terricon test onsite material arriving, right, which is not required by the county. That's not part of the testing requirements, we did that because I I wanna make sure that whatever material's coming on the ground is consistent with the highest standards. I can't do that at the yard, but I can do that on our job site. So for every day of delivery, they're taking at least one sample of the material. And then we've done additional testing to make sure that at a certain frequency um, I think it's two fifty every two hundred and fifty feet, they're taking additional samples to verify the quality of the material.
All right, Terricon, sitting back here. When y'all test, you go off of our text dot standards, right?
Yes.
How did we get to where we approved a pile with all that manmade trash? When the text dot standards clearly say that it's not supposed to be there, how did we get there?
The original material that was accepted for for delivery to the site was based on a submittal from the plumber. We were, we picked up secondary samples, running gradations. We expect to run gradations, depth checks, and compaction tests on on the sample as it's placed. So, when we got started, we did not anticipate taking a sample from the plant. We thought that it was a submittal from the plant, was that, that was where that first delivery was begun, um, and then we were sampling onsite. The way we had interpreted the specs is we were doing relation, the depth checks, extraction of the material. After the first visit onsite and we had deleterious materials, we picked up additional samples from the site. And we ran the deleterious materials tests. Um, and gradation tests. And those first results, we just got back on Saturday, the first four results we got, um. If you combine the objectionable material with the other defined materials in deleterious, they exceeded the one point five percent spec. The objectionable material was actually in the two to three percent, two to three percent range. Um, as it was delivered originally, um, the deleterious material was uh around a percent. Um, half a percent, somewhere like that. So then, um, at that time, when we had already observed the material onsite, that's when the first discussion heard, asked, okay, what do we do now? How do we fix it? Uh, where they came up with the procedure and time to have pickers out there and clean up what was treated on the site. And our expectation is that's going to be a visual observation at first, and then we would still sample. Uh, and we've continued sampling every day that ever we were obtaining one sample per day, don't have those test results yet, but um get those samples and run the deleterious material and the sieve analysis on the samples as they're delivered to the site. So I guess kind of to add to that, to help answer your question, or why, um, we agree there's confusion uh on the material that's on site, which is why we're testing the material on site. Um, we're, we're willing to test uh all the tests that are required at the plant, um, which include even a few more than the deleterious material. Um, and and we're willing to, you know, test as often as the the county feels comfortable. Uh, all this is gonna be presented to, in writing to the engineer's office, and they're gonna uh respond from G L S. Uh, but that's part of my presentation in writing is, uh, any material to to be delivered, uh, we've agreed there's gonna be a a set stockpile, it's a dedicated stockpile for this project. That will be the one that's tested, uh, if you like, we can get Terricon, which we've already been doing, to go test that on onsite at the plant. Uh, they're gonna mark it, basically paint it around the edge, so you can make sure that no material has been added or removed prior to them putting it on the truck, making documented, photo documented, uh, however you can wanna do that. So that solves the problem moving forward. What solves any concerns up to this point is going to be having to do testing onsite. Looks like he said, it's not typically required as far as the spec, but in this situation, we feel like it's warranted and really glad to provide that.
Well, you know, of course, it's Brandon's deal, I'm gonna shut up in a minute and let you deal with it, Brandon, but uh y'all had a meeting down there without me, that was a week prior, you and I going, right?
Right.
How come y'all didn't just stop hauling at that point and try to see where the county was on this? Just hauled another, what, three hundred loads or something in there?
So this, uh, I'll, uh, that was their decision, I'll, I'll kind of, uh, at least, you know, from my knowledge. Um, so y'all have all done road work, and and I know y'all are familiar with this, is once you Um so y'all have all done road work and I know y'all are familiar with this, is once you do stabilization of your subgrade. Uh you don't wanna just uh leave it exposed, you wanna put the the aggregate on top and so.
I understand, but it ain't cancer rain in six months.
And the fact that where we're at right now, they've steadily been stabilizing. We haven't, we haven't resolved this yet, we're, we haven't resolved anything yet, really. We're, you're gonna make a plan, we're gonna get over here, we're gonna look at it, go buy a ping pong back and forth, you know. We're still stabilizing, so what am I gonna look up tomorrow and and y'all gonna be hauling rock covering up that? You know, Texas Materials is in the room. They issued you a letter that said this was state grade material and it's not. Is that correct? Is that a fair statement?
Who represents them? Who am I looking at?
What's your name, John, wasn't it?
Yeah.
So how are you, how how is how is Texas Materials giving a letter out, a certification letter says, hey. We got, we got state grade material here.
And at the time, this middle was state grade material.
So that goes back to the piles, you you might, you build a pile, test that pile, you all circle around it, you don't add to it. When when we said something about it, y'all changed the process and I started making a new pile.
I don't know if there was any process in place to paint and circle a pile that you're that you're referring.
Understand, but you can't have a pile that you're continually adding to and taking away from and and do a certification on. Right, you you get a stockpile.
Certified that pile.
Certified that pile.
We certify piles like that.
And TerraCon just said that your first stuff, you said it was good, TerraCon tested it, it's not any good. The the levels were too high.
Well, the levels change over time.
They change day.
Because it it comes in uh on a demo job and so it can fluctuate any day.
This opens up another thing which Derek alluded to, but. I know he's gonna put together a detailed response, but there's other tests also. Sulfates and then the manufacturer's supposed to be certifying if the material meets the uh no, no. It's like VMS. VMS eleven thousand, which is certifying the material of any contamination, like you know, natural space kind of that. It's so if that all was certified by the manufacturer upfront, now he's saying, well, it was certified that day. For certifying that anymore, those two certifications. Is that correct?
I I can speak to that, okay.
Uh so more for you.
Right, so my and we can look into further and make that part of this submittal, my understanding of the the DMS eleven thousand, it's. A lot of that's based on where the material comes from, there's certain materials that are basically. Right, so um that that's gonna be part of the verification. Um so uh I did have a conversation uh with Andy. Andy can can recall as well what the conversation was, but he had also asked me about the material being placed onsite. Uh it was uh clear, I guess, in in my opinion, that the the county understood it was being done. Because of the the stabilization, wanting to continue the process, but it was being done at their own risk, so.
Right.
So I I hope no one takes that as uh we were rejecting your comments or rejecting your suggestions. Or or trying to just uh you know move forward without approvals, it was more based on. You know, the process had been started, that they they felt like they needed to continue and understood. Uh you know, there was, you know, the county was saying it was at their own risk and that's what we're trying to mitigate at this point, so.
Well, how you gonna get free from all the manmade trash? How you gonna be free from it? How you gonna get that all out of there? One hundred percent, how you gonna get it out?
You want to speak? I mean, I can.
Yes, uh.
As an engineer, are you gonna be able to stamp out and say it's one hundred percent free, Derek? I'm putting you on the spot.
I believe I I'd be.
I know the answer.
I'd be glad to, because you know. It gets into the spec, so the the spec says free from. And and to me, there there could be some variation in the interpretation of that, that spec also says you have to meet. ENX and these other things, the compaction testing, whatever, and even in the spec, it says. Out of five tests, you can have one that's failing and it would still pass, so. So there's, to me, uh you know, we're not trying to use. Uh a leeway as an opening to, hey, we can just throw a bunch of trash in there. Uh but I feel very confident in certifying something that after all our inspectors have visually seen. Them grading it out, wind roading, picking it all out, documenting that. Uh they asked, you know, they're they're paying for our guys to be out there during this whole process to try to help monitor the process. I I feel very confident after that process, our material needs to continue that's.
I might speak to one thing to that comment.
Hold on just a second, so I'm gonna put Derek a little more on the hot seat here.
Yeah.
Um Blau has done us a good job, they've been our engineer for a while now and and but we have. Kind of a controversy, we've got another job, Derek, that I know you know about, that I picked up a five gallon bucket. I have a five gallon bucket full of scrap right now, and the engineer says that this is not. I hadn't heard back, have you, Brandon, on on any uh variations of of if it's testable or not, or even uh. Another deal, they went down by their own risk, you know, buyer beware type deal. And I don't know, they're private roads, but I don't know that we're gonna even accept it. Just for this simple fact that I'm picking up rebar that big as my thumb and eighteen inches two foot long um. Uh this this concrete stuff, it's contaminated, you know, I mean contamination is contamination. Um if GLS doesn't write off on it, they're our engineer. Obviously, that's what we hire them for, I don't, who does y'all's testing? Out of Brian?
Yes.
Uh maybe that we need to get them involved and and let them do some testing on our on our behalf.
Uh I believe. It's already been started.
It's already been done, but in the same simple fact, we've got one side of Blau saying that this is a material. And then on the other side, on this other project at one ninety, we're saying that they're not, they're not gonna pass it, you know, um. Yeah, I I mean.
Blau saying it's good on one job and it's not on the other.
Yeah, and and.
I mean, how do we?
I I tell you, to me, it sounds like you got some high dollar subbase um. If it's as bad or worse than what we seen out on this other job, there's no way I would go for it, no way. And we're just seeing what's on top, you know, uh you can roll dirt around all you want to, but you're never gonna get it all out there, never. Uh we picked up reflectors, plastic, some wood, not much, but lots of rebar, lots of rebar. And uh.
There's lots of wood in this, chips are small, but it's a lot of wood in it.
So I just kind of where I'm at, I didn't, wouldn't go interrupt you, but you can proceed now.
I appreciate that, um I thank you.
No, I just had one comment when you said stamping a hundred percent pure.
Yeah.
You know, clean, I manage some of the largest quarries in the United States and no one's gonna stamp a hundred percent. You got deck cord and different plastics in, some of the best quarries in this nation. So to have a spec that says one hundred percent free from and stamped and guaranteed, I I'd like to see anyone.
Oh, absolutely, but but when I can walk behind a load and find a a depth cord every two or three loads is one thing.
Yeah.
Exactly, but we're talking about picking up a lot of materials, what it sounds like. Hate to be the one picking it up.
I can't bend over that much.
Let let me, I guess, answer your question personally, additional to explain, um as far as. Uh you know, Blau's involvement, so we we obviously have different roles and.
I get it, yeah, and that's why I'm not calling you out on it, you know, we just.
And GLS has that role.
They have that role on this one.
Project, um so I'm not inspecting the other projects, I haven't seen the material that you're talking about. So I can only speak today on the material that we're talking about on this project and the process that they're going through. I would say if I had been on the other project and I saw the issue. I I think the same path to resolution would be something I'd be okay with is um. Uh I've talked, you know, I've learned a lot about recycled concrete uh too through this process. Talked to a lot of other suppliers, he's right, no supplier's gonna say we're gonna, we're gonna get all the trash out, because. It's it's just not feasible on the plant side, and so to me, it's become apparent that to become free from. It's gonna have to be part of the process is that we go through this, I'll call it combing and removing the material onsite. Um that's the the best resolution that I've come up with moving forward, I I uh we're gonna be present to. Monitor that and and we would also be as the county's engineer present at the other project site to to verify the same thing.
Well, Derek, could you could you get by with this on a state job?
Once we're done, yes. I've 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 also, uh we've talked to text, I've also talked to material suppliers that supply a lot of material. You know, this this is a longstanding debate on recycled materials.
Yeah.
The reason text dot wanted to start using recycled materials is they're, you know, they're a state agency and there's a environmental benefit to using recycled.
Well, I mean, we all want, I mean, i- if it's a benefit to it, we all wanna reuse it, I mean, there's no sense.
And so, uh you know, I I think I.
But the end product needs to be the same.
I I think I also sent um you know, so a technical advisory that came from text dot when they started doing that. Um and they they use terms like reasonably free and things like that. Um and and I feel like that's what we're trying to get to here and and we fully understand from our conversations. That uh we're gonna all agree that moving forward, reasonable free is we go out there and we don't see it, right? And we're gonna dig deep, it's not gonna be underneath, we're gonna uh you know, uh photo document it, that process. And uh you know, I'm not gonna certify something, definitely not at at this point, now that I have a clearer understanding. Of the expectations, I'm not gonna certify them, I know there's still material in there that, you know, we can't say it's free, so.
What you got, Brandon?
Uh sure, I wanna talk like. I hope this is helpful, but my intention was for you to comment on it. Which is why day one, immediately after we scheduled the meeting for y'all to come look at the material, we didn't touch it. Because we wanted you to weigh in on what it looked like, right? After it was clear that, you know, we all agreed there was a lot of trash in that material. I immediately put to work in order to figure out how to solve that problem and started investigating recycled concrete. What it found was you can't get recycled concrete without some amount of objectionable material in it. Uh we've checked with multiple suppliers, we've been suggested suppliers and we've gone and. You know, verified that you can get it to certain levels of cleanliness, but it still has objectionable material. And to meet that free and clear, it will have to be picked out. To to get the the quality that you're requesting, there's no way to get it out without pickers. And so we set to work immediately, uh day three, you know, two days after our inspection. GLS was witness to it, I requested before it was, you know, a- any additional concerns were brought up to me. To have the inspector start documenting us wind rowing the material, scraping it down to subbase. Uh the contractor is here and he can confirm exactly what he's done, which. We scraped it all to one side, so we would pick through layers of it rather than just picking the top. Uh that was before any concerns about picking the material through were brought up to us. So uh i- if the material inherently has objectionable material and the only way to get rid of that is by picking through it. It seems reasonable that we would continue the process because I can't find material that doesn't have traction, if that makes sense. So. Well.
I will say, I have seen, I have seen, it's got crews out there, so.
Also, yes, so.
I've seen eight or nine guys out there.
Yeah, and we'll increase the frequency of the people, but.
Okay, you 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 said you said you got eight or nine guys, how many loads a day are you hauling?
Uh I'm not, I can't.
Are you a contractor?
Yeah, I don't know exactly how many loads have been delivered.
Morning, gentlemen.
I mean, if we're hauling seventy-five loads a day and you got eight people out there picking, that's not a little bit of.
Yes, well, we're gonna continue to pick throughout the project, not just the day that they're delivering anything like that, because we like to get the material onsite and have it there in depth. So that we have all the material in aggregate onsite and then we run through it, start flipping it over, processing the rock and manipulating it is what we have. We already have to do that per text outspending, that's why we do that road and we'll go and blade it across, let them pick the whole length of it. Go down there with the maintainer, go work something else for a little while, come back, roll it again, let them pick it. So the whole road is getting worked at one time.
It's systematic, so I, you know.
Yes, sir, it's it's just the same way that I used to do iron ore when I was a child, my first career in this business was root picker. I was head root picker for my father.
Yeah, I get it, that's why I'm saying, you don't think you got enough.
The first younger part of my career as as the man on the blade, you know, moving the material are the root pickers and and. I'm sure a lot of y'all have seen iron ore, when you use iron ore, again, you're not gonna get it a hundred percent clean. There's still gonna be those small pieces that are in there, the organic material, anything like that. And that's one of the oldest text doc specs as far as I know is iron ore, you know. As long as it passed that number forty sieve and it doesn't have too much clay in it, it's good to go. Um and and to speak on their point, you're not ever gonna get anything a hundred percent clean, even limestone, they're still gonna have. Organic materials.
You still haven't answered my question.
Sir?
You still haven't answered my question, how many loads a day are y'all?
It we're probably, what is it, how many are we putting on a load day, we're putting anywhere from fifteen hundred to two thousand tons a day on on the ground. Um so roughly, I'd say.
But it's not a day, sir. Yeah, it's not every day, no, just to be clear, uh like last week, there were two delivery days.
Mm-hmm.
The week prior to that, there were two delivery days and we had quantities, right? But with how we're processing the rock and how we're cleaning the rock as it's being processed, it's kind of relevant how many. Like, we wanna cover the subgrade to make sure to protect what's been stabilized, but we haven't done that to depth. They've put half the material down just to protect the subgrade, so we can pick pick through that half. Right, I it's a way of continuing the process without even the, because no matter how much rock we have to put, we're gonna have to process all of it. We're gonna have to pick through all of it, no matter, no matter how many loads there are.
We have to manipulate regardless, and so it's it's part of the process of what we're doing here.
I've spent a lot of time thinking about this and trying to create a process that is acceptable to the county. And shows that we're, we wanna produce the highest grade road possible.
Are y'all asking for public maintenance?
I'm sorry?
Are you asking for public maintenance?
Yes, I think that's the current plan, yeah.
So the end result, so if you don't get there, I can tell you I won't support you for public maintenance.
I I think that's generally assumed, sir.
I think you should know that.
Yeah, well, I.
Even though it's Brandon's, I'll just tell you where I stand on it.
If any given county doesn't like what we're producing, they're not gonna accept it, right? So my hope is that we can get to, you know, reasonably free and clear, that's not gonna be zero. I think it's important that we're all on the same page there, I have developed a inspection process and. That that's before the county shows up to inspect the material. So basically, you know, we'll inspect each road individually. Any trash is found, it will be removed, any contaminants indicate that it needs to be worked through the subgrade, we'll work through the subgrade. Until we pass the engineering inspection and zero material is found.
Yes, I would say uh more work is gonna be done on this material than it probably has ever been done before. To get it as close to that zero, just 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 from the the fact that uh we obviously see. Uh you know, the county stance on this, uh we know that the process will be scrutinized and and their goal is to. Have an in project, if everybody can agree is met the spec um.
So I'm gonna make a comment that that uh you you said that the limestone has always got debris in it, I. I just disagree with that, I understand that sometimes it does, every once in a while, but not on the the level that what we're seeing out there. Uh that's being brought in after it's been picked at the the plant um. TerraCon stated earlier some, I don't remember exactly which point of this conversation, that it did not pass spec. Now, was that the first original material that was taught, brought out there?
Yes, it was the first uh four samples we picked up onsite.
What did it not pass?
The deleterious material.
Did not pass.
Did not.
So what are, you you can't pick deleterious materials out, what are we gonna do to rectify that?
I hold on, I'm sorry, let me clarify, deleterious material plus unacceptable material. Exceeded the one point five percent.
Those are two separate.
Yeah, yes, our test lists them all together.
Did the other material, did the material.
Did the other material, did the material? The clays, the, like, the, the geologic material, was it below?
Yeah, it's an average between about a half a percent and one fifty.
Have y'all done the, where you get it to sleep and press it and all the, all the tests on that first material and it passed?
On the proctor, we've run a proctor. And that, that establishes our, our maximum drying unit weight. Yes, we've done. We've done it with a text dot spec.
Yes, then you've also done radiation?
Yeah, I've done radiation, right?
Then I apologize.
So, so. We do have, um, one or two that are out slightly. But we have lots of samples, but the says all of them falling in place. Um, our survey analysis right now, we've got.
Game come up.
Rock one percent, couple sieves.
Those from supplier, they chose not to use, these are six from Travis Point Road.
Look at the fires pass, the six. Radiation from Travis Point, there was two samples, one sample which had one sieve out. One every five and then the last one chose to have two sieves. So you add all of that, I don't know how necessarily I have worked for sales services, but.
So the material borderline projectable, or borderline acceptable.
But are you getting, are you getting GLS to test it again?
Yeah. Yes, sir. We are working on that.
That'll, that'll have some pretty good weight.
One, one more question for, uh, I was taking notes over here, sorry. Um, you said the testing frequency is once per day and somebody else said we're bringing in fifteen to hundred, uh, fifteen hundred to two thousand tons once per day. So we're taking how many tests once per day on two thousand tons?
We were doing one test per day, one bulk sample per day of delivery for the deleterious materials test. We're sampling the roadway every two hundred and fifty feet left center and right. We combine those samples and a composite sample and we're running sieve analysis every two hundred and fifty feet on. For gradation, for gradation.
But you're not doing compaction yet?
No, they're not, they're not.
Not to dip.
Once they get final grade, we were, we're expecting. We didn't quite know on frequency, so there was an email sent in, we followed Montgomery County frequency. And it's a left, center, right holes for depth check. And, and we would do densities left, center, right, and at a frequency of every two hundred and fifty. Frankly, I think that's a little overkill. We, we picked that so that there was some consistency and also so our technicians, when they're on this job versus a different job. They have the same mentality, right?
So it was indicated out there and I don't remember with that young man we was talking to, what was his name?
Which one?
When I went, there was only one guy out there. Is he in here?
No.
On sense?
Uh, he indicated that this, this material was used in Montgomery County and other counties with all that trash and they was okay with it. Is that true?
Don't have the same objections that you do. That's correct.
Just curious. Money to cover it up.
Yeah, they got, they got money, we ain't got money.
Well, so.
Observation. They're taking that material, that much wood and that much plastic and that, I think, I think the stuff they got delivered.
The initial one is dirty admittedly, I wouldn't say that represents what the rest of our roads are being built up to.
No, I would not either.
Yeah, we've addressed that with Texas materials because everyone looked at it and they're plastic everywhere, right? That's why we admitted, yeah, this is.
And I can't believe it's even testing test.
Well, no doubt.
It's terrible.
There's a couple of other things. We've had it additionally cleaned, so I think what's out there. For the majority of the community now is not representative of that initial delivery. That's a fair assessment. I think you'd even agree with that.
What we're going to do with that initial delivery?
I don't know, we're going to sort that out, but, um, if it passes inspection. First of all, I think we just got the results back today. We, we haven't even had a chance to discuss what to do about that, right? So we want to sit down and have a look at the tests and say, hey, is this material good or not good? And then go back, if it's not good, go back to Texas Materials and say, hey, it's not good. What are you going to do about it? So those are discussions that have already started as of this morning, right? Uh, but I don't want to jump to conclusions without conferring with everybody involved. On a test that I just got back this morning. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. So additionally, the, you know, the comments were made about the, the rest of the material that was more thoroughly cleaned, that there was still. Contents of objectionable material. Uh, we all agreed on that as well on Friday and we discussed with Texas Materials about additional cleaning for the stockpile material that's onsite. So we're going to take additional measures, right, to continue to clean the material before it shows up to the job site. We are still going to have to pick through that material. Right, and just as a point of clarification, the reason, my understanding why. The objectionable material was tested with the one point five percent is because. Prior to this, that was the generally held infield standard. That standard has changed as a result of the comments.
The interpretation has changed after we got the letter.
That's exactly right.
Saying that.
Yeah.
Free from.
Correct, and so everyone's had to kind of reset, you know, to that standard, which we've agreed to do.
So Andy, we, we talked about this last week, testing my memory here, but. The, the county, has the county received any, anything from Texas Materials or, uh, the manners on this material?
Received initial submittal. That was based on a stockpile certification from the hero provider, I don't remember correctly. Um, but then we subsequently have discovered that stockpile. That he, you know, when he was talking about it, is constantly adding, added to.
The initial one is not. The new one is, yes.
No, the initial one, the site, the guy, the site said he was adding to that every day up until he started making the new stockpile. Then he was making the new stockpile, so he wasn't adding to that one. Even the initial stockpile was being added to every day. So again, we did receive some, but we're kind of back to square zero and receiving something else. That's where I understand we're at, so I, yes. And I think Derek is preparing that.
So the issue, I just, uh. Issue obviously being there's, there's no clear connection. What was delivered on site and that, that test, that's, that's what we're trying to.
Does Andy have this?
Yes, that was submitted to Andy and that's part of what the original submittal that we were asking for approval from.
Back originally, but, but that pile, by the time they were delivering, that was before the delivery date substantially. Based on what he just said and what was told us at the site, the pile that was delivered from was being added to, so that doesn't necessarily represent the material that's.
Right. So it's safe to say that we're not having.
Also missing some test results on the material delivered inside.
Other than what?
So. Where we're going here, we want to just kind of give them how you feel. You're going to have a hard time getting me where you need to be. I'll look at the end product, but you're going to have a hard time getting me there, so.
What kind of?
They need to fill the court out, so.
What kind of extra testing expenses are we going to pick up from GLS? It sounds like we're going to be almost babysitting on this job. So it's not our responsibility to.
So, so where we're at right now. And, and I know we're doing this workshop, but as of our, as of last week, our last week. Uh, Lyle is preparing a, a, a new submittal with all of this. Detail in it that we're basically the court discussing, I think. The idea of the, the workshop is to give a little feedback as he's preparing that so that he kind of knows what he's going into. So he prepares and will be acceptable. So as far as that, we're waiting on them to propose to us, right? What it is that they're proposing to get the material clean, how they expect it to be. Spec when they will be calling us out, how often they're going to address all that and they're request to us. For us meeting all the standards of the specification for the material, how that's going to be done, what they're proposing. And our firm will review it and either no objectioned or object, right, and give comments. And that's where we're at right now in the process. They're preparing that to submit to us. Once we have that in our possession, you did. But that's where we're at right now. I don't have the full proposal. He's giving you guys bits and pieces of it today. Yeah, I, I, his final submittal to us will be more detailed.
Yeah, I, I think it'd be, if, if we normally go out there three times as a, hey, that was the same stuff you've been hauling. From Kosse or whatever forever, you know, that's different. They're going out there three times a week. Cause you're getting times a week, because you're getting two delivery loads a week, making sure that it's right. So, so I don't think it's our, our burden to bear the cost of extra monitoring and testing and stuff like that. Um, at the end of the day, the objection, no objection is based on text dot standards, right? You, you know, you get it there or you don't. So my, my concern, I guess, begins when they dump it on the ground. I really don't care what they do with the facility. Dump it on the ground and you say, okay, it's ready for the road, then we step in and say, does it meet our standards? Our standards are text dot standards.
To be clear, uh, I think we've been clear to the developer and their team about. It is not our responsibility nor are we going to participate in developing procedures concerning. Their material within text dot standard.
Exactly.
We are, we are, the only thing is that those procedures that they're going to do, the, the way they're going to do it by, by final processing onsite. Is going to require a, a different than normal inspection protocol and that will be part of what they submit.
That's what I'm talking about, exactly. So, yeah, the pre-process and all stuff like that. Uh, really, that's not really a concern of mine. The concern is when they call and say this stuff's ready, you know, to go on the road, that's when we step in and say, okay, here's your. Paperwork says it passes all the number forty sieves and stuff like that, you're good with that. Um, our inspector guy's going to go out and look at it and it's, it's either good or it's not. And there's not a whole lot of great.
The, the, that the, the. Because of the, the objectional material requirement and what's been out there, you know, it. They're, they're finishing the processing of the material to standard at the.
At the site, right, at the site. So wherever they point at it and say, that's our finished pile over there, that's where we step in and say, okay, now, now we're ready.
I think they're going to.
Involved in this process.
Think their plan is to put together something to telegraph to us, how they're going to want to move through that as part of their proposal.
Okay.
And I, I think that's an important point because I think. You know, we're, we're learning in this process too. I think some of the stuff y'all observed on site. Wasn't necessarily something we were saying, hey, we're about to put asphalt down, we're ready to look, free to look at the road. Um, I'm, I'm really glad that Thomas had everybody out there the first day because I, I think we're going to end up with. A, a lot better product, uh, potentially in the end, but definitely what the spec calls for and what the county wants to see.
Well, y- you know, Derek, Lyle and you have been coming to court for a long time, so you know what we expect. And. I'll give you the, you to give it to him, you know, and, uh, and then I'll go look for myself.
Well, y'all know where I stand, yeah.
And is, is there any consideration maybe to, to? Look at a little bit longer warranty period on this too? It, it's a new technology.
They just don't take it during that timeframe, several years.
But, well, I mean. Hold them for a year to it, but if you tell them, hey, you know, do your stuff, but this is new and. Maybe you want two years out of this versus one, that might be something that would, um. I mean, something's going to fail, the first two years are probably going to tell its tale on it. But I'd, I'd be, I'm open minded on it. I mean, if they can get it to the standards. But once again, my, my concern starts when they dump it on the ground and point at it and say, okay, it's ready to be tested. That's, you know, up until that, concerned, but not really my circus yet. Until they, until they point at it and say, this is, that's ready to go on the ground.
Yeah, well, but, but the normal process is, is like Brandon said, you build a pile, you make an order, I want X amount of tons for this job.
Right.
Make an order.
Yeah.
Test that pile and then you test that pile against what goes to the road.
Yeah.
You know, and, and so.
If it's good, it's good.
Contamination, yeah, with the contamination, you may not be able to do that. I don't know.
Absolutely.
They're willing to sit out there and pick it clean is, is what this court sees fit, then maybe you got a chance, but. In the, in the end of it, it's on you, you know, um.
Yeah.
I know it's contaminated, so.
And I'm curious to see if we get any extra test of GLS, what it says.
I just want to make this clear, you know, GLS's initial, initial comment on the material when they were out there. Inspection on other items. We don't also want to see, if we, if our inspectors see something that's problematic on site, we don't want to wait to raise it till. Material's been worked and in place and.
Not in place. Not in place.
And, and TJ wanted to bring it up early.
Sure, yeah, it needs to be talked about now, but, yeah. All right, what you got, Brandon?
Uh, I, I got one, one more suggestion and we're talking about road materials, but. You know, we might, we might want to look at our policy and just say no recycled materials from Harris Point on that.
Virgin materials on.
This is a lot of problem, a lot of, a lot of headache, a lot of.
Hey, I'll give you a thumbs up on that one.
Oh, you've had two projects that you're having trouble with.
Both of them with the same material.
It's clarification. I'm not the one with most technical knowledge, so. First time I came to Paris said. And we have track record of that for almost fifty years. Montgomery County, Harris County, a long time ago. Um, and Grimes County and Alawak County. Uh, we have roads that are, uh, miles and miles long that. Takes a snow force, um, all the way back with his dad and his grandfather, so. This isn't our first rodeo. We work with fresh concrete all the time. We know exactly what it is and we like it a lot. Uh, it's a really great road. To your suggestion, I think that's a great idea. I'd love to have a discussion at least about, you know, if we need to do an extended warranty period. I stand by the road. I've got fifteen year old roads in Montgomery County, I can drive you off. And Montgomery County has been zero dollars maintained, fifteen years old. Um, I'm in Oates, section one, uh, ASA built them. So we're, we're very confident in what we build. You won't find a better road builder than ASA.
But I'll stand behind David and extend that warranty if he wants to do that.
Not asking you to do that, but thank you. I just want to, hey, we want to be a benefit here, you know, uh, this is, uh. We're out there with a standard of our own as well and, uh, you know, Thomas will be the first one to tell you when we see material come to the job site that what we saw initially. We're not okay with that, um, but we're also trying to be reasonable. Thank you, guys.
I mean, no executive session, if y'all got something?
I've got nothing. I do want to wish our elections officials good luck. And appreciate what you're doing.
Yeah, Ms. Rigby, you're. I think Kerry will keep your time.
Good morning, Ms. Rigby.
Morning, morning.
Might be leaving, I don't even know to.
Hi, um. Because I have a question. So regarding, um. For some of our most vulnerable citizens. As far as the house, I'm sorry. Coming to the end of her, so I'm not sure. To just kind of go back and see what the Texas State Code says when it comes to deposits. Again, I represent some of the most vulnerable citizens here in our county. Didn't seem to have a voice. I didn't choose to be a voice. I stand as a voice because I know God appointed me to this task and I'll speak with the Asami. He reminds me that he's faithful to his promises. So when things like this happen, that has continued to happen, and I've stood before you all promptly for the past four years. And I know that I'm going to see God's word come to pass. Seniors, children are not going to be walked over. I stood here, I know, May the sixth. And I just put it forth into the atmosphere, something that I had said in Montgomery County in two thousand and fifteen. Eventually, the threads unwrap. Eventually, the threads unravel. The results came out, as I said, cuz I didn't say it, I knew God said it, and it's going to happen here. I said on that day, some people are gonna be sad and some really be able to rejoice, cuz I do believe. That God looks out for his people.
This is Watson Clark, I can't talk to you, I'm sorry about that, apologize for that, I catch you in the hallway afterwards.
Okay, you say catch me in the hallway afterwards?
Yeah.
After this session.
Uh, yeah, we can't address you while you're in public comment, but we can, I talked to you after.
Okay, well, once again, I know that funds and things have been strategically dispersed, have been. It has been where we have been totally overlooked. And it is our prayers for the best, for the citizens of Walker County, which were some of those citizens too. Senior citizens, children, I've lost lots of family members during this past couple of years, maybe like you doubts. But I do want some answers eventually, and I know that God is gonna see me through as well as his people, thank you.
Thank you. All right, no questions for media, Commissioner's Court.